Well, good evening to my KPC family and anybody else who might be joining me tonight for this study in Paul's letter to the Romans. And also my maiden voyage, my initial foray into the world of Facebook Live. That is correct. I am a non-Facebook user. I've said many things about Facebook I will not repeat now because I'm afraid I'll disappear if I do. But this will be my initial foray into using Facebook Live. Getting me to do this at my age is, I heard a story about an old farmer in North East used to always cut his own firewood with an axe. It's just how he'd always done it. And then one year, his son gave him a chainsaw. He said, "Here, Pop, use this. It will make cutting your firewood so much easier." And so he gave him the chainsaw and went away. And a week later, his son came back and said, "Pop, how'd you like the chainsaw? How'd it work for you?" And the old man said, "Terrible. Terrible. Doesn't work at all. I'm going back to my axe." His son said, "Well, what's wrong?" He said, "I don't know. It doesn't cut wood or dirt." And so his son said, "Well, let me see it." And his son takes the chainsaw, takes the cord, and pulls it, revs it up, and the old man says, "Wait, what's that noise?" That's kind of like me doing Facebook, okay? Facebook Live. But I'm going to do this anyway. I'm going to hope and assume and pray there's actually somebody out there on the other end of this broadcast is actually paying attention. Assuming you are, welcome aboard. I'm really glad you're here as we study Paul's letter to the Romans, which I have labeled, and I think for a reason you'll find out why, the letter that changed the world. It did change the world. So I'm going to begin with a brief word of prayer. If you are, wherever you can stop and pray without people staring at you, please join me, and we'll pray and then get started. Father, thank you for, first of all, for calling us, those of us who know Christ is Lord. Call us to be your own, not for anything you saw in us, but in spite of what you know about us. You call us to be your own and adopt us into your family through the adoption agency of the cross of Christ. Thank you for that. Thank you for your word, that your word is truth and that you sanctify us. You set us apart for your purposes through your word and that your word is eternal. Lord, that the grass withers and the flowers fall, but the word of our God abides forever. Now, my prayer is that through this very imperfect vessel and through these technological means, you'll take this time we have to impart some of the truth of your word to some of your people and anyone else who's listening in tonight. And I ask this in Jesus's name and for his sake. Amen. All right, so we're going to spend tonight just as doing an introduction to Paul's letter. And then I don't think we'll get into the text at all tonight. If I get all this done in half an hour, first of all, you might want to go outside and wait for the second coming of Christ because it will be a miracle. Preachers never get done sooner than they think they will. But I will quit at eight, no matter where we are. So I will go just doing introduction tonight, and then hopefully by next week we'll start into the letter itself. I also sent out a bunch, three documents to our church family that helped set the stage for this study. And I hope you had a chance to read them or some of them. If not, please do. If you're interested in staying with this study, I think they'll really help you appreciate this letter all the more. And so let me do a little bit of stage setting here, and then we'll work toward why this letter is so important. In fact, let me just start with it. Why Romans and why now? Well, Romans is really the apex of theology in the New Testament. It's hard to say any one book of the Bible is any more important than any other. It's all God's word, but Romans is the deepest and the densest, theologically speaking, of any book in the New Testament for sure, and maybe the densest of any book in the Bible. And the Bible does not have a single book that gives us a systematic theology where it begins with the doctrine of the word of God, and then the doctrine of God, the Father, then God, the Son, then God, the Holy Spirit, and then the doctrine of man, and then the doctrine of salvation. Things that we have, documents like the Westminster Confession to do for us. The Bible doesn't have a single book that does that because God didn't think it was important that we do that. It's kind of a Western way of having to do things, which is okay. That's not how God's word is written. The closest thing we get to a book of the Bible that does a systematic theology is Romans. And so we're going to do a fairly deep dive into Romans, and I hope you'll stay with me. And I'd like to hear from you comments and questions afterward. And every, what I'll try to do is take your comments and your questions that you send, and you can just email them straight to me if you want, kent@kendallprez.org. Kent@kendallprez.org, and send me those comments, laudatory please. Whatever you want to say, ask questions, and then the next time I'll take some time to try to address your comments and your questions. If you don't send me any, I'll make some up and pretend that you sent them to me and address them that way. And why now? Well, it's no big mystery to anybody that we are going through one of the most convulsive times in the life of this nation and including our city here in Miami in memory. I'm not sure I can, in my lifetime, I'm not sure I can point to anything that rivals this other than maybe the 9/11, and then we weren't, then we were united. We were just shocked and not sure what was happening next. And I'm old enough to remember 1968. I was pretty young, but I do remember after Dr. King was assassinated, then Robert Kennedy, and our country felt very much like it was coming apart then too. But we didn't. We pulled together, and good things came out of that. Right now, we're experiencing a tension and pulling apart that I'm not sure I can remember anything like this. Paul wrote to a church in Rome, actually churches, there are a bunch of house churches he's running to, and they're going through some terrible times. Well, there's persecution. Christianity was not well thought of at that time, wasn't even really even recognized. It was considered a cult of Judaism, and the Jews had been scattered and dispersed all over the Roman Empire. And so they're going through some tough times in the churches in Rome. Rome is the most important city in the Roman Empire for obvious reasons at that time. Miami isn't necessarily the most important city in the United States. It is to us because we live here. But it's a very important city, and I believe it's, I think it's safe to say it's the capital of Latin America. So what happens here in Miami reverberates throughout the rest of the Caribbean and Latin America. And so I think it's important for us to address this letter now. As I say, I'm going to take this fairly deep, assuming that if you're with me tonight for this study, you're probably a pretty serious student of the Bible or you want to be. And so I'm going to do a pretty deep dive into this. I'll give you some quotes on the screen, and if you want, I can email out documents and so forth, make them available to you. But I'll try to make multiple levels of this study available so that even if you're a brand-new Christian, you're not going to get lost. I will not be using a lot of heavy theological jargon. I don't talk that way, so I'm not going to try to affect that for you just for the study. Be easy to do with Romans, but I'm going to try to make this street level in everyday language because again, that's how I talk, that's how I am, and I'll try to keep doing that for you. I'd like to find a lot of applications. So if you'll help me as we go through the study together, you say, "Oh, man, that applies to my life in this way. That applies to life here in Miami in this way. That applies to the situation we're going through right now, whether it's because of the civil unrest following the tragic death of Mr. Floyd or because of the pandemic of COVID-19, whatever." If you'll help me make some applications of that, I really do want this to be a practical book, not just a lot more head knowledge. I don't think we need a lot more of that. We need to make this real and make it applicable to our lives. And as I say, if you have questions and comments, you send them to me. I'll try to deal with those every week. Now, I call this the letter that changed the world. I have in my notes a series of quotes from people who are extremely pivotal in church history. I'm not going to read them all to you because you'll fall asleep on me before I get to the first, to my second page. But I'll just point out a few of these to you. After Jesus himself, the apostle Paul is the most important, most pivotal, most impactful figure in the history of Christianity. He is the missionary who took the gospel to the Roman Empire, pushed it way out west, as far as Spain, we think, and really set the gospel afoot throughout the Roman Empire and then beyond that. After Paul, the second most important influential figure is Augustine. Some people call him Saint Augustine. Some people pronounce it Saint Augustine. I was taught Saint Augustine is in Florida, Saint Augustine is in heaven. But Augustine is not a saint anymore than you or me if you know Christ is Lord. In the New Testament, if you're a Christian, you're considered a saint. He is, however, the most important theologian and pivotal figure in Christian history after the apostle Paul. He comes along somewhere around 375 AD to 450 AD and wrote the second most important book in the history of Western civilization. After the Bible itself, he wrote The City of God around 425 AD. And the reason I go into a little bit of Augustine's background is because his life was changed from a man who was extremely immoral, wine women is sung. We would have considered him a womanizer, a skirt chaser back in the fourth century, early fifth century. And then one day, visiting a friend, going through a time of inner turmoil, he was wandering through his friend's garden, and he heard what sounded like a child's voice saying in Latin, "Take up and read. Take up and read." And then he saw this, this volume lying open on a bench in the garden. And he picked it up, and it was open to Paul's letter from the Romans, and this is what he read. "Not in riots or drunken parties, not in eroticism and indecencies, nor in strife and rivalry, but put on the Lord Jesus Christ and make no provision for the flesh in its lusts." That's Romans 13, verses 13 through 14, from a much older translation. That sentence grabbed his conscience, turned him around, and Augustine became a Christian and became the second most important person in church history after that. A number of other key figures in church history have had their lives touched by the letter to the Romans. I will mention Martin Luther to you because he is the pivotal figure in the Reformation, Protestant Reformation. He is the one who in 1517 basically put the match to the fuse that launched the Protestant Reformation. Martin Luther is no stained-glass saint. He is an extraordinarily important person, a brilliant man, courageous man, who did some incredibly good things. He also did and said and wrote some inexcusable things. I believe Martin Luther, if he were alive today, he would be diagnosed bipolar. And when he was in a manic phase, he was extraordinarily productive. He was in a depressive phase. His life, his world was so dark, and he wrote horrible things that are inexcusable. But in his better days, in his younger and better days, he is the one who, he was a monk, a Benedictine monk, and he was translating the Bible from the original languages, Hebrew and Greek, the New Testaments in Greek, into the German language. And when Martin Luther's eyes opened to the truths of the book of Romans, it opened his, it opens his eyes to the truth of God's word that were justified by faith and not by works, and that transformed Martin Luther. I'm going to see if I can go to the screen here and show you a quote or two from, I'm already, I'm already down the page a little bit from, or I should be, from Martin Luther in his preface to his commentary on Romans. Martin Luther writes this, "I grasp the truth that the righteousness of God is that righteousness whereby, through grace and sheer mercy, he justifies us by faith. Thereupon I felt myself to be reborn and to have gone through open doors into paradise. The whole of Scripture took on a new meaning, and whereas before the righteousness of God had filled me with hate, now it became to me inexpressibly sweet and greater love. This message of Paul became to me a gateway into heaven." This letter, talking about Romans, is truly the most important piece in the New Testament. It is purest gospel. That's how Martin Luther felt about Paul's letter to the Romans. It changed Martin Luther's life, and because of him, it changed the course of Western civilization and the course of the world. And one of the reasons that the so-called New World, which are now the United States, Canada, Mexico, and South America and so forth, became overwhelmingly Christian is because of Martin Luther. Because people fleeing Europe, fleeing religious persecution in Europe, came here for religious freedom, and overwhelmingly, they came here to be part of the Christian faith. Now, I won't read all the other quotes to you, but John Calvin found the letter to the Romans to be extraordinarily important. John Wesley, the founder of the Methodist Church and the great evangelist of Great Britain in the 18th century. His life was changed by hearing somebody reading from Romans. Karl Barth, the most important theologian, Protestant theologian of the last century, was, had his life transformed by reading Romans and wrote an extremely important commentary on it. And Saint Francis Schaefer, Francis Schaefer, who is the patron saint of the reformed faith of the last century, not really a saint, okay? Francis Schaefer also found Romans to be extraordinarily important. The Anglican, Anglican prelate John Stott had his life changed by Romans. And on and on it goes. And so it's impossible to overstate the importance of the letter to the Romans. I do want to read one more thing. Eric Metaxas has written extensively on Martin Luther's life. He wrote a great biography of Luther that came out about two and a half years ago. Yeah, about two and a half years ago. I read it. It's a great biography of Luther. And Metaxas, in his introduction, quotes this from Luther that, well, I tell you what, rather than give you another long quote of Luther's, let me say what Metaxas says about Luther's preface to the letter to the Romans. He says, "Luther's words in the preface so purely communicated what it meant to be born anew that more than two centuries hence, in May 1738, John Wesley heard them read aloud and instantly had a profound conversion experience." This led to Wesley's preaching the same gospel, gospel message on a grand scale, which had tremendous historical ramifications, including the Methodist revival of the 18th century, which in turn led to the conversion of William Wilberforce, who led the battle to end the slave trade in the British Empire. It also led to the ministry and preaching of George Woodfield in the American colonies, which over several decades led to the unification of the colonies under the same egalitarian ideas as those that Germans were encountering in the early 16th century through the preaching of Luther and other Reformation preachers. Ideas have consequences, and Luther's had more than most. So again, Paul's letter to the Romans, the impact it had on different people down through the ages, is it's just hard to overestimate. And so it's a good place for us to dive into this in-depth study. I mentioned both, I've mentioned Luther and then also William Wilberforce. I would say this much more. There's a great movie about Martin Luther. I think it's simply called Luther. It came out about four, five years ago, and Fines. Trying to think of his first name now. Not Ralph Fiennes, but his brother plays Martin Luther. An extraordinarily good and powerful presentation of part of Luther's life. Doesn't go through all of it. Gives you a great idea of Luther's conversion and the importance of the book of Romans for him. And then also I mentioned William Wilberforce. Again, if you're not familiar with him, he is the person who, more than any other one person, helped abolish slavery, first in Great Britain and then throughout the British Empire. Took him over 30 years to do it, and he died shortly after seeing his life's work accomplished. William Wilberforce's story is told in a great movie called Amazing Grace. And I would commend that to you as well. If you've not seen either one of those, they give you a great appreciation for God's work and the life of extraordinary pivotal people. And then Wilberforce's work, of course, led over into the life of many people in the American colonies at the time. And even though it is to our very lasting shame that we were a slave, we were colonies who allowed for slavery up until the Civil War. We finally fought a war to put an end to it. But it was the preaching of people like Woodfield that helped get rid of slavery. And so it's just hard to overestimate. It's hard to overestimate the impact this letter's had on so many people and the impact that through those people that that has had on our lives today. So the letter, Paul's letter to the Romans, is extremely impactful even in our lives still today. And the impact continues on. Now, I want to give you a little more background to the letter itself. That's some introductory material on the letter. Let me give you some background to why Paul was writing this and what led to Paul writing this, this letter when he did. So here's some historical background. First of all, at the time, the world setting was such, was this. Okay, when I say world, this is Paul's world. And so there was one world government. You'll notice I put quotes around the word world because Paul's world was the Roman Empire. Of course, there was a great deal more to the world than that. The Chinese empires to the east were much bigger and older than the Roman Empire. But Paul didn't know anything about that, and the civilizations in India predate this, of course. But Paul's world was the Roman Empire. And so at this time, as Paul's writing this, by the way, he's writing this letter around 57 AD. We are pretty sure he wrote it from Corinth in the winter of 57 AD. And as we'll see when we get into chapter one, Paul has never been to Rome at this point. He's writing to a city he's never visited, to people he's never met, and a bunch of churches he did not plant. And this is extremely rare for Paul to do this. And as he writes this, under, there's one world government, the Roman Empire, the Roman government that oversees the whole Roman Empire, and it's under what is called the Pax Romana. I just throw that out there to let you know I did take Latin. This is about all I remember from Latin. Just means the peace of Rome, which is just to say that you did not cause trouble in the Roman Empire unless you wanted to find yourself on the business end of a Roman centurion's lance or on the business end of a Roman cross. And so there's relative peace throughout the Roman Empire at this point. And that's important for the communication of important news. Also, there's one world, and again, world meaning Roman, there's one world language, and it was not Latin. People think that Latin was spoken throughout the breadth, length and breadth of the Roman Empire. It really never was. The people didn't speak, the common people didn't speak Latin anymore than Latin students of the last 100 years in this country do. Latin is something you suffer through, you learn, and I'm glad I took it. I'm glad it's over. And it was very helpful to me in some ways, but not a lot of fun. But the common people, in addition to their own dialects of whatever part of the Roman Empire they were in, the common people spoke Greek if they wanted to do business. Sort of like English is the language of business throughout the world today. If you're going to do business in a global economy, you've got to have at least a rudimentary grasp of English to do that. Makes us, as Americans, kind of lazy because we don't have to learn other languages. But people in other countries, boy, they know English the world over if they want to do commerce, want to engage in commerce. Well, people in the Roman Empire had to know, have a basic grasp of Greek. Greek was the language of commerce in the Roman Empire. This is extremely important because the New Testament is written in the Greek language. So you've got one world government that's enforcing peace throughout the Roman Empire. You've got one world language, the language of business, and that's Greek. And you have the Roman roads. Rome has, at this point, as Paul's writing this, Rome has set up and constructed a system of roads, roads that go throughout the length and breadth of the empire, not everywhere, but substantially throughout the Roman Empire, so that news can travel more quickly than it ever could before. By the way, I have a mosquito buzzing me, so if you hear me or see me, try to get her. And by the way, this is sexist, but only the female mosquitoes bite, so I'll refer to her. That if you see me trying to get it, I'm not having a facial tic or tactile hallucinations. There's a mosquito, and they love me. What was I saying? The Roman roads get you throughout the length and breadth of the Roman Empire much more quickly than had ever been possible before. I have never really been to Europe. I've flown over it. I understand that even to this day, that many of the highways in Europe, even some of the superhighways, are built over the same routes that the Roman roads were built over. And so news can travel fairly fast. So there's your first three important pieces of information for the world setting. Here's the next one. Throughout the Roman Empire, again, this is early first century or mid-first century, 57 AD. Throughout the Roman Empire, there's growing skepticism in regard to the pagan religions. Again, if you studied Latin or even just studied ancient Rome, you know that they have their pantheon of gods and goddesses. The Greeks have theirs, and they're roughly correspondent to the ruins that the Romans have. And they have Jupiter as the big god, and Juno is sort of the most important female. And interestingly, Apollo is the same name in both Roman and Greek mythology. So the Roman gods and goddesses, they have their pantheon of all these gods and goddesses. And they're really basically immortal children. They're like overgrown children that they quarrel with each other over silly things. If a mortal human being looks cross-eyed at a god, he's liable to turn him into a statue or a bull or whatever. And at this point in the development of the society in Rome, people are starting to say, "Really? Really? Are there really all these gods up on a mountain somewhere? They're throwing down thunderbolts and turning people into statues?" So there's growing skepticism in regard to the pagan religions of Rome. And as I mentioned, there's a persecution of the Jews. I'm going to say more about that when we get into chapter one. But there's persecution of the Jews. They have been exiled throughout, all over the Roman Empire. And with the Jews, the Jews are the first people in the world to believe, to be monotheistic, to believe not in many gods, not in gods of every tree and rock and stream, not in gods of animals and plants. No, to believe in one god, who in the Old Testament is revealed to us as Yahweh, the covenant god of Israel. The Jews are the first monotheists in the world, and they take with them wherever they go a belief in one god. This is extremely important in planting the seeds and plowing the field and getting it ready for Christianity. And also developing, just some years before Paul writes his letter, it's well over 100 years before Paul writes his letter to the Romans, there is something called the Septuagint. And that's just a big word that really, it just means seventy. And it refers to seventy scholars who take the Old Testament, which is written in Hebrew for the most part, sprinkling the Aramaic, take the Old Testament and they translate it into Greek. So now you have the Bible of the Jews, the scriptures of the Jews, which proclaim one god and talk about a Messiah who is to come. And from the pretty obscure language of Hebrew, spoken by very few people in the Roman Empire, from the rather obscure language of Hebrew, you now have what we call the Old Testament, with the Jews simply referred to as their scriptures, their Torah. You now got it in Greek where people can read it all over the Roman Empire. And so the scene is set for the good news of the gospel to go throughout the Roman Empire and for Paul to be able to write this letter to the Romans, which can be read by, again, people of the length and breadth of the Roman Empire. Now, Paul is a key person as well, just Paul the human being. Let me say a little bit about him. He is born Saul, Saul of Tarsus. And he was born into a very affluent, very influential family and a very affluent, influential university town. Tarsus would have been for the ancient Near East sort of like Boston would be today, the home of a number of really world-class universities, a seat of higher learning. He is sent to Jerusalem at a fairly young age to study under a very influential rabbi whose name is Gamaliel. If the name is familiar to you, it's because we meet him in Acts, chapter 22. Gamaliel is a rabbi who teaches young Saul of Tarsus in the ways of Judaism and teaches him the Hebrew scriptures. We also, he's mentioned in Galatians, chapter one as well, but we meet him in Acts, chapter 22. So Saul, Saul of Tarsus, becomes a very vocal, very vehement critic of Christianity, which at that time was again, just considered a sect or a cult of certain Jews. Paul is one of the most ferocious opponents that Christians have at this time. And in fact, he makes it his life's mission to go and find Christians who are considered part of something they just called the Way, to find Christians and drag them off to be handed over. to be handed over to the Jewish and the Roman authorities, where they were imprisoned. They were tortured, and some of them were fed to lions in Rome's in Rome's Colosseum. Paul is public enemy number one, if you're a Christian. He is the last, I'm sorry, he's still Saul. Saul is public enemy number one, if you're a Christian. You do not want to hear that Saul is coming towards your town. In Acts, chapter nine, we read that he is off to Damascus to consider finding and persecuting Christians, when he has this very interesting encounter with the risen Christ, who knocks him on his butt and blinds him and says, basically, who do you think you're messing with? Well, he literally says, Saul, Saul, why are you persecuting me? Jesus so identifies with his people that when we are persecuted, it's like we're persecuting him. Saul says, who are you, Lord? And Jesus says, I'm Jesus whom you are persecuting. And Paul's life has changed, Saul's life has changed, right there in an instant. And he, that's why we refer to people having a Damascus Road experience, a very dramatic conversion. Saul is converted immediately into a follower of Christ. And in fact, he becomes the final, the thirteenth and final apostle. To be an apostle, you have to have had an encounter with the risen Christ yourself. And Saul is the last one that does that. And after his conversion, Saul becomes Paul, the Apostle Paul. So he is as Jewish as you can be. He's a Hebrew of Hebrews. Do you want to read his testimony? Go to Philippians, chapter three, and I'll tell you about himself. He's of the tribe of Benjamin. And he is, he considers himself a Pharisee of Pharisees. He's as, he's as devout a Jew as he can possibly be. And yet he comes to believe that Jesus is the Jewish Messiah. So he's as Hebrew as he can be, as Jewish he can be. He is Greek educated. So he speaks Greek language fluently and knows Greek philosophy. And he's a Roman citizen, which makes him the perfect guy to take the promised Messiah of Israel and the message about him and translate that into thought categories and and ideas, images, and so forth, that that Greek-thinking people, the Greek-minded people can understand and Greek-speaking people can understand and take that throughout the Roman Empire. He is the key guy. And that's why he was so important and so impactful and so influential in terms of advancing the kingdom of God and advancing Christianity throughout the Roman Empire. So you can read about, I think I said, I think I said Paul's conversion was in Acts, chapter nine, which is true. If you want to, we first meet him in Acts, chapter seven, when he is a younger man standing by watching the stoning, the the execution of the first Christian martyr, a man by the name of Stephen. That's the first time we meet Saul. And then his conversion takes place in Acts, chapter nine. So Saul is a man who becomes Apostle Paul, who I I just described him to people as he's a man who is stunned by grace. He has tried all his life to please God by following the law. He has been as zealous to follow the law, the Old Testament law, as anybody, and it got him precisely nowhere. And then he finds out it's not about works at all. It's about God's grace. And he's absolutely stunned. So he's a man who is stunned by grace. And as you read his writings in the New Testament, sometimes you hear me say newer testament because it's all one testament that God gives us, and there's a great continuity between the two. Old Testament, New Testament, older Testament, newer Testament, I'll I'll say both, say both ways. But as you read his writings, and he wrote thirteen of the twenty-seven books of the New Testament, as you read his writings, you just find him being a man who is stunned by grace. And for all his great learning, for all his erudition, he can be so eloquent. Read First Corinthians thirteen, if you have any doubt. Or Philippians, chapter two. He's so eloquent. There are times when you feel as though Paul is writing or dictating to a secretary, trying to communicate what's happened to him. And the glories of the grace of God is as if he just, he he doesn't know what to say. He's just stunned by grace. He's trying to find words and categories to express what's happened to him, and he's just having a hard time putting it into words. I don't know if you've ever had that experience or not. Happens mostly, I think, when we're younger Christians. After a while, I think we kind of get used to the fact that we belong to Jesus and maybe the newness wears off to our shame, a little bit like being married, I suppose, not not with me, of course, but with others. But we really should never get over being stunned that God Almighty, perfectly holy, perfectly righteous, perfectly just, would love people like us and call us to be his own, and at such an incredible cost. Probably all ought to be a little more stunned, including myself. So that's who Saul, who becomes Paul. That's who's writing this letter, fifty seven A.D., the winter of fifty seven A.D., from Corinth, probably from the home of his friend Gaius. He's writing this letter to the people in Rome who he's never met, towns he's never visited, churches he didn't plan. So that's a little bit of the background. Now, let me just say this also about Paul's strategy, his his evangelism strategy, because I think it also has some distinct bearing on us. And if there's enough interest in this, I can I can put this stuff up on screen next time as well. I just didn't want to bombard you with too much verbiage, too much written stuff on the on the screens tonight. Plus, I'm just so pretty. I I hate to, I hate for you not to see my face. Anyway, this is Paul's urban strategy. He makes three different missionary journeys, and this is how he went about advancing the gospel on his journeys. First of all, he worked the great urban centers. Paul went to the big cities of of Athens and Corinth and Ephesus and Antioch and eventually Rome, although that would be his last stop. But Paul goes to the great urban centers there, and he preaches the gospel there so that the gospel can spread from the cities into the outerlying areas. I'm afraid today the church in America has kind of done the opposite. We sort of abandoned the cities. And cities show for lack of faithful gospel witness there, unfortunately. I say that to our shame. So we sort of abandoned the big cities. We're too afraid to go to the big cities. And we work from the rural areas or the suburbs in. Paul does it the other way around. He makes use of the synagogues because he is Jewish. And he can speak their language, literally and figuratively. So he goes to the synagogues in order to reach Jews, to tell them about their Messiah, and Gentiles who are converted, Gentile proselytes who've come into Judaism, because again, they understand there's one God. It's not a big leap for them. And they understand that their scriptures talk about a Messiah who is to come. Then he shows them how the Old Testament, again, our Old Testament, how their Bible, how their scriptures are fulfilled in the life of Jesus, that Jesus is the promised Messiah of Israel. Some believed him and became disciples of Jesus, and a lot of them didn't. But he went to them and preached the gospel to them first. And then he would adapt the gospel message to the culture and needs of the hearers in that area. So he spoke one way about one set of things to the people in Corinth. He used different ideas to the people in Ephesus. He used different ideas to the people in in Athens and then in Philippi and Colossian and so forth. So Paul adapts the gospel. The gospel is the most flexible, adaptable message, faith message the world has ever seen. The message does not change, but the language and the categories and the forms and the examples and analogies and so forth, they they change everywhere. They have to change everywhere, all the time with people. And Paul is a genius at doing that. And then after he goes to these different cities and he sets up churches there by by following, by by attracting disciples, converts who become disciples. He disciples them and he sets up a church. And then when he moves on, he follows up. He didn't just say, hey, great to meet you. Have a nice life. He sends back letters. He sends them with envoys, people he knows he can trust, who will take Paul's letters and will act as his extensions, his representatives, to help continue the discipleship process there. And he goes back to the different cities when he possibly can. It's not always possible. He couldn't always return, but when he could, he'd go back and follow up. And then he also preached the unity of the gospel between Jew and Gentile, rich and poor, educated and uneducated, slave and free. The gospel, again, is the only faith message in the world to this day that says there are no distinctions between us. We are all made in the image of God, every single one of us. We're all entitled to be treated with dignity and respect and compassion, to be to be, again, the golden rule, to be, to do unto others as you'd have them doing, as you'd have them doing to you. If we really embrace that today, if we really personify and 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 took that message into our hearts today, what a difference that would make if those four police officers in Minneapolis would look at George Floyd and see him not as criminal, a culprit, but as a fellow human being, made in the image of God. I just don't think there's any way they could have treated him like that. And we wouldn't be experiencing what we're experiencing in this country and around the world right now. If we would just embrace that one principle, that in God's eyes we're all of equal value because we're all His image bearers, every one of us, regardless of race, ethnicity, ethnicity, country of origin, sex. We're all God's image bearers. We we should be treated that way. Whatever you do to another human being and yourself, you implicitly do to God. His image were made. Even if it's a, even if it's a a deep division and a pitched battle, treat the other person with that kind of dignity and respect and compassion. You may disagree, but don't disrespect. If that message could have just gone out and been embraced by by those police officers in Minneapolis, what a difference it could make. So so that's Paul's gospel strategy. I'll I'll repeat him real quick. He works the great urban center so the gospel could go from there to the outer areas. He makes use of the synagogues and reviews Jews and Gentile, converts, proselytes to Judaism. He shows how the Old Testament is fulfilled in the life of Jesus, that Jesus is the promised Messiah of Israel. Adapts the gospel message to the culture and the needs of the hearers in each place. He follows up with with letters and sends back envoys and makes return visits when he can. And he preached the unity through the gospel of rich and poor, slave and free, male and female, Jew and Gentile. He preaches unity through Christ to all those people. Now then, I've got more I can say about the about the historical background of that, but I think that's probably enough for tonight. I want to give you both the theme of the letter and an outline for the letter because we will be, we will be using this extensively as the weeks go by. So let me go back to this screen and give you this outline of the letter. I hope you can see it. I had to make the font this size in order to get it all on one screen. Full disclosure, Pastor Victor really had to walk me through this thing. And so without him, you would not be probably either seeing me at all, or you wouldn't have these slides on the screen. And if it's too small, blame him, okay? It's a beautiful thing. So here's your outline of the letter. And again, if you want these things, I can email these things to you. I can put them in a document and send them out to you, whatever will help you study this letter. Chapter one, verses one through fifteen are form the introduction to the letter. Chapters, chapter one, verse sixteen and seventeen are the theme of the letter. That the one who is righteous by faith shall live. If you ever go to a symphony, if you've ever heard a symphony, a recording, whatever, you know that they begin by giving you an overture. And in that overture, they're going to play some parts of everything you're going to hear from then on. The rest of the symphony is basically an expansion of of an amplification of what you hear in the overture. Chapter one, verse sixteen and seventeen function as the overture to the letter. And they are, again, just, it's just a mountaintop experience. I'll say a lot more about them next week if we get there or the week after that. And then verses, chapter one, verse eighteen through chapter four is an exposition or an explanation of the one who is righteous by faith. Then chapters five through eight are an exposition or explanation of what he means by shall live. So for the second half of chapter one through chapter four, we look at the one who is righteous by faith. And then chapters five through eight, we look at how that person shall live. And then chapters nine, ten, and eleven, we get a treatment of Israel's unfaithfulness and God's faithfulness. If we get that far, Jesus doesn't come back first, if you all don't decide you're bored with me, if I live that long, if we get to chapters nine, ten, eleven, they are very controversial, but I'm going to try to guide us through that, the best way I know how. Then verses twelve, sorry, chapters twelve through fifteen, verse thirteen is our response to the mercies of God. Chapter fifteen, verse fourteen, on to the end of that chapter, practical applications. And then chapter sixteen, we get his final greetings. And again, these are final, Paul's final greetings to people in Rome that, as at this point, he still has never met them. He still never laid eyes on these people. But he wants to establish that personal contact with them. So I'll leave that up for just another minute. If you're scribbling this down at home or old geezer talk, you're taking a screenshot of it or whatever. I want to leave that for you for just another minute. So you can see, this is what's going, this is our roadmap for what we're going to do in this study, Paul's letter to the Romans. Hopefully, you've gotten all that. I hope I didn't talk it to death. I find this letter to be incredibly intriguing, fascinating, challenging. I will tell you that people have spent the bulk of their entire adult lives studying Paul's letter to the Romans. And it still never felt like they've reached the the bottom of it. They've plumbed its depth. I will not do that either. And I won't add anything to the study, Paul's letter to the Romans, that somebody a whole lot smarter than I am has not already said. But what I will try to do is bring you some of what these great thinkers, these great theologians, these great preachers, what they have had to say about Paul's letter to the Romans. I'll try to bring that to you each week and then through me, you can enjoy learning from these great, great people of faith who've gone before us. It was Augustine, I believe, Augustine, who said that the Bible is a stream in which children can wade and elephants can swim. Children can wade and elephants can swim, by which he simply meant whatever your level of depth as a Christian, however long you've been a Christian, however seriously you've been following Christ, you can wade into the Bible at the most basic beginner level. Wherever you are, you can wade into it and find something there that will that will minister to your soul. And however many years or decades you've been doing this, if you've been following Jesus seriously for decades, you can go back into the Bible almost anywhere and find things that you'll swear that was never in there before. God, you must have just put that in there because I've never seen that. I've read this on how many times? A friend was telling me today, looking at the passage that we're going to be preaching this Sunday in Ephesians, chapter five, he said, it's it's like, I feel like I've almost never read it before. And I replied back to him, I've read this passage hundreds of times. I have taught Ephesians more than once. And every time I read it, I see something that I I never noticed before. That's the, that's the beauty and the genius of God's word. So as we go through Romans, I hope you'll learn a lot. I know I will. I already am as I get ready to teach it again. Those of you teachers, you know this. The teacher always learns the most, and I'm learning so much by going back through Romans. I hope you'll stay with me and we'll do it together. Please let me know if you're going to stay with me. I know if you're not, you probably won't tell me. But please let me know of your level of interest and ongoing, and and whatever questions, comments, concerns you have, issues that you feel like want to want to know if I can address, hopefully related to Romans. And I'll do my best to try and answer your questions and and address your issues to the best of my ability. And if I don't know the answer, I know some other really smart people who I might be able to reach out and ask and say, hey, man, what do you think about this? So that's it, my maiden flight, my maiden voyage on Facebook Live. I hope this really worked and it got out to you. And I haven't been sitting here staring into this camera on the top of my monitor. You're welcome to my office. You see some pictures of my family, some of my books behind me. I've actually read a couple of them. And and I'll be doing this every week, Wednesday nights, seven to eight P.M. for hopefully the rest of the summer and however much longer it takes us to get through Romans. Thank you for being with me tonight. Let me just say a quick order of prayer as I wrap it up. And Lord willing, those of you who are members of KPC, I won't see you this Sunday because we're still not going to be meeting in person again. Soon, we hope. Soon, we hope. We're working on it. But you will see me and the others this coming Sunday. Until then, I'll hopefully see you again this next Wednesday night as well. Let me, let me close in prayer. Let me, let me close in prayer. Father, my prayer again is, as always, that you will take the words of this letter, even my introduction to it, Lord. That you take the words of this letter that Paul wrote to the Romans so long ago, and you'll take it. We might become more and more like Jesus, the living Lord. I make this prayer in His name. Amen. And thank you for being with me tonight. Good night.